The plan before council is on a site that originally received approval in twenty seventeen. For two apartment buildings, each being six stories and each with sixty units. Along with associated parking, both of those buildings had underground parking. Neither of these buildings is proposing underground parking, it'll all be, uh, all be surface parking. I have provided counsel as well with the original approval from twenty seventeen. The principal differences with the buildings, the buildings are slightly smaller in terms of footprint. And they are also flat roofed as opposed to the peak roofs around. The original, each unit or each apartment building will contain fifty eight units versus the sixty units. One point that I wanna very much highlight on this plan as council is aware there had been discussions about. The landowner providing land for a connecting link between Woody Crest. Into the school, the high school site for future consideration for secondary access since the only. Current frontage that the high school property has is along Main Street. The applicants have shown. An area at the back corner. This has been reviewed, the design's been reviewed by. By Infrastructure Engineering Services. It can accommodate the necessary linkage. In order to continue to support the site development itself. Since this, this connecting link was, was added. As part of this amendment process. The municipality has agreed to allow the supplementary lands that would not be needed for the actual roadway itself. And then continue to be used as part of. Site for a couple of parking spaces as well as internal. Laneways around the parking, parking lot area. These lands would be available for us to access in the need, if, if the need arises for service extensions. Off of Woody Crest, if that becomes necessary as part of the. As part of future plans on the high school site. Access into the site has not changed, there was originally a. I guess for lack of a better description, there was a bit of a roundabout on the site to kind of provide a cut up. Or kind of. dissuade people from, from cutting through the site between Maine and Woody Crest. The design is still such that there's pedestrian crossings, it's not a direct link. You do have to make a number of turns through the site to get out and it doesn't mean that it's. Not still gonna be used, but I have discussed with, with the applicant and their architect about. The possibility of putting some, some traffic calming. Possibly raised pedestrian crossings in here just to, to mitigate any, any cut through. One of the things that's on this site that was not included in the original site plan approval. Is rather than having the underground parking, the applicants are proposing above ground garages. These would be similar to, to residential garages, obviously with several more spaces. But they're located in three, three spots along the back of the property. Behind building number two, along the side and forward of building, building number two. And then one in the main parking area that would be between the back of the lot and building number one. There is amenity space provided outside, there's shuffleboard courts, there's an outdoor pavilion. Along with a raised garden bed area. On the site to provide for those who like to garden. The site does meet the minimum open space requirements in the zoning by law. The other plan did include a little extra green space, however. It also had the underground parking to, to allow for accommodation of that. But this site still, still does accommodate the required green space on the site. Parking was a concern as well on this site, council may recall going back. To that approval, there was a bit of a debate between providing more green space and providing more parking. The, the experience with, with apartment dwellings and some of the comments that we heard. At that time and that have been ongoing with a number of developments is whether or not our bylaws providing adequate onsite parking. The parking ratio that's being used here is actually one and a half spaces per. Per dwelling unit versus our bylaws requirement of one point two five. So it has increased amount of parking that can be accommodated on the site. And as also as part of the medical clinic, as it evolved a little bit, there was also some concern about. A need for additional supplementary parking. To handle any overflow for it. And that is actually being developed as part of, part of the next phase of development on this. I noted in the report that there's an additional twenty seven spaces. And these are in addition to above and beyond the apartment building spaces. That can accommodate overflow from the medical clinic site. There's no change in, in the policy, there's no change in the zoning, the apartment buildings were permitted. It did allow for up to a hundred and twenty dwelling units, it will actually be a hundred and sixteen units. The application was originally circulated to RICO and there had been no objection to the original site plan, obviously subject to acceptable stormwater management plan and that remains. Remains in place today as well. Infrastructure Engineering Services reviews, reviewed the proposed layout of the, the connecting link in the road and has indicated that that. That proposed design can be accommodated in the space it's being. Being provided. I haven't received a great deal of comment on this, there has been a couple of submissions, one. Both from residents on, on Woody Crest, a number of the issues that, that have been raised. Are issues that were raised in twenty seventeen as part of the approval and continue to, to be concerns in terms of. Traffic connection between Maine and, and Woody Crest. There was some concern expressed about the proximity of the one garage along the back of the kind of building two. That's considered an accessory use, it's subject to those setback requirements which are a meter, this is actually proposed as a meter and a half. I'll let the applicant speak to that particular issue if there are questions on it. But unless there's additional questions, my recommendation to council is for approval of site plan amendment application. SPA nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one for the requested modifications is outlined. On the attached site plan on lands located at one ninety to twenty-four Main Street East. Subjective conditions and requirements outlined in the amending site plan agreement authorized mayor and clerk to sign any agreement registered said in title. All ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Mission of the, the applicants, Mrs. Van Minin, Mr. Valente is in attendance as well to help answer questions. So if council has any direct questions to them as well, they're more than welcome to. To bring that forward, any initial questions on the report from Mr. Brown? Councilor Lucier.
Thank you, as I wasn't a member of the council that approved the initial site plan. I am still concerned about the six stories. You know, this is the first development of this height in this corridor. And I'm very concerned that its precedent setting and that future development will. You know, automatically be allowed to be six stories. Once this goes ahead, so I guess my question to Mr. Brown. Through you, Mr. Mayor, would be, is there any way to identify this as non precedent setting? And to allow future councils to have the opportunity to limit. Development to, you know, the, the more acceptable three or four stories.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Council Lucier, council always has the opportunity to, to limit the height of development. Precedent was not actually set by this development, but rather. The, the six story building at the corner parking division, so there had already been some, some height established back quite some time ago. On the development, I think height is very location dependent. Not all corridors will necessarily support this, quite often you will, you're gonna see. You're gonna see a push or a request for, for higher buildings and more density on, on the main corridors, that's where you typically find them in, in. Most municipalities, understanding Kingsville's not most municipalities, but. That is where you're gonna find the push for it because it, it helps to support. The underlying goals of providing a variety of housing, providing walkability, providing access to, to services with, without that. Absolute need for. A vehicle, if you locate buildings like this far away from the core. Then it kind of defeats the purpose of. Of having them close to things, if they're not close to things, you don't have that choice, you have to drive and you're, you're forcing that increase in traffic. And everybody knows all things lead to Main Street East and our, our commercial center, so. Council, you know, council certainly retains the ability to, to look at each site, each case, site by site. As it goes forward.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Newfeld.
Thank you, your worship, through you to Mr. Brown, just with regards to the parking. And I guess during wintertime when we have snow removal, I know sometimes extra spaces are used to. Gather the snow, is this gonna be a case where we're at the limit or where we won't have enough? Place to put the snow, that's the first question, second one is. With the access to Woody Crest. Which I believe we're looking to make open and permanent, right, and. How does the snow removal work up until that point and then it's not a, like then it's gonna be a, a private road? Or route through this development to Main Street? Do you understand those questions or do I need to?
No, no, no.
I know that's a little jumbled, sorry.
That's okay. There, there's some assumption, I think, based on parking numbers now to, to address. A snow, if we get colossal snowfalls, thankfully we haven't had any as of late. It, it's up to individual property owners to, to move snow off of the property if it is overloading their site. And getting rid of it so that they're not being underserviced by, by parking. We thankfully haven't had that problem, but. The, the parking numbers do try, try to allow a bit for that. I know that, that's become a question in, in some commercial developments when you're. Sort of meeting the minimum requirement for parking. As far as this, this snow removal component, I don't believe this is the only example of where a. Municipal street terminates at a sort of a private access that goes through the main. It'll, it'll be the property owner's responsibility from. Their property line and it will be our responsibility to. To move the snow the other way, other, other way. I think most of, most of the operators typically don't push snow into the driveway. And terminate, although some of us shoveling snow in the winter might debate that, that question, but yeah, I, I, I think there's. I, I think that'll be managed properly in terms of. Where we stop and they start.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, following up on Councilor Horus' comments about the six stories. I think we all realize that the six stories was approved by a prior council. Our staff have reminded us, once you grant them that, you can't take it away. I appreciate that, but to suggest that we'll just look at it. As Mr. Brown was on a case by case basis. Might lead any developer to think, oh, I might get it next time. When this council that's gathered here today has made it repeatedly known. That three stories is the maximum as far as we're concerned. And to expect six stories for a future application, don't expect it because I for one will not support it. That's the one item, number two, the property for the access. To the high school grounds, I'm glad to see it is on this drawing. Can you provide to us, Mr. Brown, or to our solicitor? Exactly how we are assured that that will be there in the future if needed. I don't want to see an application before us today and then have it go. Disappear or double in heights.
I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to double in height as far as the. As far as the access, that will be a condition of the approval that the applicant convey those lands to the town, that would be. Not unusual to other site plans where road widens have been requested either through us or. The county, so that will be, that will be taken care of that way. I, I think the height refers to, to the buildings, it's, it's set in the zoning, there's no. There's no ambiguity in that, it, it caps it at a maximum. Height on, on this property that was set in, in the zoning in twenty sixteen.
Okay, Councilor Ginn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I think the deputy mayor is being cheeky on that one. I have similar concerns about the, the precedent of the sixth story, I'm not entirely sure what. What the justification was for six stories made by the, the previous council, but I, I understand that it's been approved and I don't think it would be fair to. To try to change that at this point, this. Current application is actually a lower height, so that might appease some people's view. I do really also appreciate the cooperation with the access to Woody Crest, I think that's imperative for. Future development of that school property and I think that. The, the developers to be commended and thanked for that and I'm curious to hear from Mr. Valente who's new to this conversation. For this council, what your timeline would be and, and when you think you might be opening up some rentals in this town.
Okay, I'll defer to Mr. Valente, welcome.
Hi, hi, good evening, Mayor and members of council and we're very excited to be before Kingsville Council this evening. I've always admired the town and more recently admired it visiting, I have lots of friends in Kingsville and happen to visit on a. Pretty consistent basis, enjoy the, seeing the Grove Hotel go up and all the activity along Main Street. And really excited to be here before you tonight to talk about this project which we're, we're branding as Kingstown Development and. This is the second phase of the development and as you know that the medical building has been built and. And now Valente Development and along with some, the partnership group, which is consists of the original ownership and some new investors. Have, have made a deal to purchase the property and what you have before you here is amendment to your existing site plan, so. The Van Minins have taken this property, the rezonings have already been put in place and I understand there's some debate about the heights and everything and I don't want to get into that because it's zoned and. That's what the official plan is for, so and anyways, I'm, you know, just want to talk about the merits of this development. From the previous version, the buildings are slimmer, the units are a little bit smaller, we've removed the underground parking, we've lowered the height. The buildings that you see that will be built here are buildings that we're building right now in Lake Shore, we're building at the Beachside Development in Lake Shore. In Tecumseh at the Gateway Tower Development, it's similar footprint and unit layouts. And in LaSalle at Creekside, in the town of LaSalle and all being six stories and all being small municipal towns within Essex County. And I know that there's concern about the height and we won't get into that, but I believe me when I tell you that this is gonna be a development that Kingsville can be proud of. We're really excited to be here, I've always had my eye on Kingsville and specifically this property and when the opportunity arose to become part of this. Development, I jumped at it right away and I believe our timing is very good with the market conditions. And what a great thing to be bringing a new type of home ownership style. Ownership and rentals to Kingsville, there are seniors, this is a development that we expect a lot of seniors to be. Occupying these units, whether it be through a lease on a rental basis or on a purchase, a lot of our. Property management and. Styles have been targeted towards that senior type living where we offer value added services through third party providers, some things that. Some residents can find at retirement homes, but maybe they don't want to be in a retirement home anymore because. They don't want that real close living environment which COVID has really shined a light on, so these are individual apartments for seniors. That can be purchased or leased, we talked about timelines, we're looking at about sixty days for permits. I expect, you know, given the market conditions, the real estate market, one of the buildings is probably, is gonna be offered for sales, the other one will be reserved specifically for rentals. And like I said, given the good market conditions, we think that both buildings can be built simultaneously with about a fifteen to sixteen month. Construction time period and at the end of that, I think that everybody can, you know. Hopefully that's part of this council, look to it and say. You guys have done a good job and, and we're happy with the development and that's what, that's what my goal is here this evening and that's my. My goal in my career is to, to, to build good projects and. You know, and to do what we say we're gonna do, so again, I'm here for questions, should anybody ask them. The, just one side note about the garages, this is something that we used in Lake Shore, we used in LaSalle, we used in Tecumseh as well, it's a great. Way to buffer the existing residents from the new development. Certainly it's better to, to look at the back of these garages, they're all decorative masonry. Construction, so it's better to look at maybe something that's more of like a tall wall behind your property line than it is to see the buildings and, and the activity that goes on in the site, so. You know, I think that that's going to be a very positive thing, when we were asked. Mr. Brown brought to our attention the town's desire to acquire an access point that would be permanent so that they could control and. Do the development at the high school, which I understand the town is interested in. In a proper fashion and making sure that there's proper connections available to it and they asked and we said, no problem, the land is yours, so. That's going to be a part of the agreement and we're not gonna take it away, we're gonna give it to the town as part of this approval, so. And again, I'm available for any more questions that you may have, but I thank you for this opportunity to present this to you this, this evening.
Thank you for the follow up, for the questions from council, Councilor Gaffin.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So first it would be to Mr. Valente. The windows on the north side. Which would be the east building. Have you thought of, and we had a commercial building decide to do it, is making windows that may be a little bit higher, so you're getting the nice light in on that side. But they're not able to look down into those six or seven backyards and that whole subdivision for privacy. Just, just a thought for design purposes, I don't know what would be on that side if it's a bedroom or, or family room or whatnot, but. Definitely would really help the neighboring people worrying about people looking or peering down into their backyards, that's, that's one thing. And. Yeah, that's, that, and, and the Woody Crest will not be used for in and out on doing construction. That was a question that some of the neighbors were wondering if there were gonna be trucks going in and out of there or if they're going off of Maine. Okay, and lastly, this is to administration. I guess it would be to Andrew, are you, do you have any concerns about the stormwater management on something like this, I was the one that was pretty. Vocal about having more green space because green space is a natural way of draining property properly. And the septic system, we're putting two, six stories, we have a five story on division that has done a different style. And I was just wondering, have we had any issues with that septic system? And are, are you concerned at all with this, this new style of septic system on these two units?
Maybe I'll turn it to Mr. Valente first to try to address a couple of those questions on design.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm absent the site plan, so on the north side, there's building A, I think that has a full frontage on both the north and the south side, so. That's the building that's furthest away from Woody Crest, so first of all, I don't think there's any opportunity there to change that, the other one is being the. This particular unit on the. The. Upper left corner of the development there, I think that we could probably, if, if it is desirable, I think we could change the way the balcony faces on that one to, to orientate it. We may be able to, please don't quote me on it, but I think we can, we can orientate that balcony on, on an easterly. No, west, west, west basis there, so we could change that so that there's no balconies looking into the. Backyards of those particular residents on Woody Crest, the other building, there's just nothing we can do, that's, there's, it's, it's, but it's quite of distance away. As far as the, the construction traffic, we're happy to use Main Street and not Woody Crest, I don't think that, that's going to be any issue. I think those were my only questions that. Were asked.
Yes, thank you. Then I'll turn to Mr. Brown or Planky to, to speak to the sanitary connections and availability.
For you, Mr. Mayor, certainly the, the stormwater management design has changed somewhat. But we did review the revised report and it is fairly consistent with the original. Even though the plan has changed somewhat, the stormwater management requirements did not change that much, so there is sufficient onsite storage to accommodate the. The revised plan, so we have no concerns about stormwater management for this development. As far as sanitary, there's, you, you referred to it as septic, there is no septic on this site, it is serviced by sanitary sewers along Main Street. As you know, we reconstructed a fairly significant portion of the sanitary sewer network through Lakeside Park last year. And that has increased the amount of capacity we have in that whole collection system, so we have no concerns for sanitary at this point.
Thank you, any sub entry, Councilor Gaffin? Good, I have Councilor Patterson.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, one of the questions that I've received quite a bit was the construction and the, the traffic. The only recommendation I would really like to offer would be that, you know, when we get the trucks out there, just. You know, we have some type of flag person to keep our traffic moving, that, that seems to be one of the main contentious right now, people want to keep that traffic flowing. Now comes a part, you're probably not used to, I've had people call me, can't wait, you need to get into your projects. They're very, very happy, you know what, we get so many negative comments, but we do get good comments, so sometimes we gotta break that ice. And say, yes, I have received some positive comments, I've had people call me and ask me, when is this gonna be built? How soon can we get in, what's it all gonna be, I like your explanations tonight, you're bringing it to a hundred and fifteen residents or units. You're looking at purchasing on one side of the building, renting on the other side, that's a win-win for us. Like I said, Kingsville is hard struck for living conditions, I think this is the right time, the right opportunity. And unfortunately, we've all been through this battle and I think, and then I really like the way we're going, we're going at it as working together. I, I, I like the idea of the green space you're talking about, some gardening areas, some lawn bowling, that, that's all fantastic, that stuff that. That, those are areas that we wanted to see moving forward, a fifteen to sixteen month timetable to have things. Up in the window for sale or for rent, again, congratulations and Mr. Valente, did you have anything to do with that soccer win yesterday? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It's just a matter of time before the Euro infiltrated our council meeting, it's all good. Appreciate the comments, have Councilor Newfeld.
Your worship, just a final comment. You know, I was on the council that approved this back in twenty eighteen. And from my perspective, the decision of the day was to provide more housing for. Kingsville and it was to encourage walkable and, and a cyclable community. It was to encourage walkable and and a cyclable community and, you know, if we want to be serious about. Um you know, supporting um. Uh you know, uh more housing and and solving a housing issue, uh we need to support the people that are in the business of building houses. And um from what I can see, I like this development, uh developer seems to be uh cooperating. You know, I I'm actually looking forward to seeing this file close, uh and we can move on to the next thing, so um. I I I'm in support of this, thank you.
Okay, thank you, uh have Deputy Queen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I alcohol Thomas's comments, it's nice to see Mr. Valeti with us tonight. He's noted for providing a good quality product, I'd move the recommended action.
Thank you, is there a second for that, put on the table? Councilor Patterson, thank you, further questions, Councilor Lushir?
Thank you, um just the one other concern that I heard expressed was um about the the view from the re- the existing retirement residence. And the windows along um the west side of that residence and I see there is some landscape space there and I'm just. Um hoping that consideration will be taken to ensure that, you know, that there's some plantings there or something to make that view um, you know, as pleasant as possible.
Okay, thank you, um yeah, under the plan, there were some some additional buffering there, I think with the uh. The natural vegetation there, but I think there's some existing presently on that side from the the terminal. Okay, any questions for the questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call a question, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, seeing none, motions carried, thank you, uh congrats again to the uh and more importantly, appreciate uh the effort and investment you're looking to uh to work with the community.
We look forward to it, thank you very much, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
The our next um item number four under staff reports is again. Or site plan amendment, this one's SPA fifteen twenty twenty-one, uh this is by Tay Inc. at two hundred Main Street East. Again, part of lots two concession one in the eastern division, representing part two under registered plan twelve R two six seven nine nine. Um regarding uh this uh site plan, I'll turn it over again to our manager of planning services, Mr. Brown, to take counsel through the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just gonna share my screen again here. Maybe. Okay. The application before you tonight is for an amendment to the site plan approval um at two hundred Main, uh this is the medical clinic property. On the original site plan, there was provisions for uh signage on this property, however, it was signage that was located uh up towards uh the main entrance of the building. Uh and likely fairly uh fairly small in nature, simply identifying uh the building uh and it and its name. Um the applicants are looking to uh to now locate a uh different type of sign, this was not one that was. Uh provided uh to council at the time uh of the amendment uh to address the height issue on on the property. And uh I said that they would have to come forward with an amendment uh if any type of signage was added. This is the sign that's being proposed and. This is the location of the sign. Uh in relation to the building itself, uh it would be uh towards the towards the west side, uh closer to the high school. Uh approximately ten feet off the front property line. When this was first presented uh to me, uh I struggled a great deal with this. Uh one of the concerns that I had and I I've outlined this in the report to council was when this development first came forward, regardless of its scale. It is located in a residentially designated area, uh residentially designated areas do su- do allow for supportive commercial. Uh a medical clinic is considered one of those supportive uh type of uses. Uh there are other medical uses along uh Main Street uh in residential uh residentially designated areas. The key, however, is when you're in a residential, residentially designated area, uh and you are proposing a. Uh commercial or in this case sort of quasi-commercial type use, it has to remain at a at a certain scale, uh obviously putting in. Uh uh a building and then having a a fairly significantly sized sign that's more consistent with a commercial. Uh endeavor, uh in my opinion, was not consistent with the underlying residential designation. Um the applicant wanted to bring this sign forward to to present it to council. Um however, my my recommendation to council is that they deny site plan application. Uh amendment SPA fifteen twenty twenty-one as submitted. However, I am suggesting the council approve site plan amendment application for two hundred Main Street East. For the installation of one ground-mounted sign, subject to the following conditions. Maximum height of fourteen feet. A front yard setback of twenty feet minimum versus the ten that is being proposed, keep it further away from uh the street. Uh the side yard setback uh is proposed at fifteen feet, uh I'm suggesting that 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 is an adequate setback as proposed. And something that uh obviously hits uh very close to home in our community is lighting. Any lighting that is associated with this sign must be dark sky compliant, must be full cutoff standard. And must include a timer to limit lighting to the hours of seven AM to ten PM. The signage must also be limited to the display of tenants located in the building and the name of the building only. This would limit any type of electronic message board signage uh on the property, this would simply only be for the use of. Displaying the tenants that are located in the building. And then lastly, uh the council authorized the mayor clerk to sign uh the amending agreement and register set agreement uh on title. There has been a couple of comments that have been received, uh. The scale of the sign obviously being proposed by the applicant wa- was a concern that it was not consistent with some of the recommendations of the Main Street Committee. Uh I am inclined to agree with them uh on that and that's why uh the recommendation uh that I have brought uh to council in terms of reduced scale. Uh on the sign, I am available for questions, uh that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, appreciate uh the update and uh reports, are there questions, members of council?
Yes, one basic question to start with, then I have some comments, the basic question to start with, exactly how big was the sign that was originally approved?
I, when I looked back at the site plan, there was no specific details, there was only a location uh on the sign, there was no specific. A height or scale, but the footprint of it was fairly fairly small, as I mentioned, it was it was located uh well back on on the lot near the uh near the main entrance.
Thank you, that being the case, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate Mr. Brown making reference to the Main Street Review Committee. Fourteen years or fourteen individuals that donated one year of their time working on the Main Street Development Review Committee. Even the sign that Mr. Brown has articulated as a possibility is not in keeping with the recommendations that came to council not that long ago. With regard to signage, we talked about street appeal, we talked about other municipalities with residential areas. So Mr. Brown and to the other members of council, having sat on that committee as one of your representatives along with Kim. I can't even support the recommended action or size of the sign that is suggested and for us to have to to say or debate. A fourteen-foot sign without even a concept drawing, I find objectionable.
Okay, thank you, um other questions from members of council? Councilor Lushir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I, you know. Don't want to go into the history, but wouldn't have a, you know, wanted to approve the size of this building, so now that we're looking at a sign to match the size of a building that I didn't agree with in the first place. Um you know, my my thought is, uh you know, I don't I don't approve, I also am concerned about um even the. Suggestion um of lighting until ten PM on a medical building, it doesn't make any sense to me, I can't imagine why that would be. Why that would be uh necessary and certainly if I lived across the street, I wouldn't want that sign lit until ten PM during the winter when um you know, it it's dark at. Five o'clock, so I I think the the suggested timing, I would prefer to have no lighting at all on on the sign and medical building would typically operate during uh. During daylight hours anyway, so um I just I can't support uh this recommendation.
And thank you, other questions or comments? Um certainly, in the absence of a sign uh design, you know, council could defer until that gets brought back. For a better explanation or review, maybe in fairness uh to both the the applicant and to uh to our management as they try to um. Work the way through, it doesn't appear that, you know, there is support for uh a thirty-one foot or a thirty-foot height s- sign that was originally um presented. Um so I'll leave it to council for that consideration, uh Ms. Vanminen, I I do recognize you here and you you did have a a comment or follow-up if you'd like to to speak, I'd be happy to hear your your comments.
Yes, good evening, um it's the the medical center is not going to be a nine-to-five business, it there is urgent care. Um facility there, there is radiation, um uh the um property will be used more than just from a nine-to-five business, so. It it is quite possible that uh people, uh whether they've fallen and broken their arm, urgent care will be possibly available to them later on. Uh that they would need some lighting of some sort and we're certainly open to whatever the town's limit is now on the lighting, which we've done already on the building. Um taking the lighting off the soffits, et cetera, um but uh because it's a full, it we hope it to be a full facility building. Um it's possible that there will be some uh people coming in and out of that building at nine o'clock at night that will need some lighting. And the sign I think that we proposed was not thirty-some feet, it was a twenty-foot sign and we certainly have no no problem with reducing it, it's just to identify. The um all the facet- all of the different um um doctors and and what's available there, that's that's our use, that's the reason that we would like a sign, so. Um uh whatever, um if it has to be reduced, we're we're okay with that and we're certainly okay with with um limiting the lighting to uh to meet with the town's requirements.
Thank you, this might be my mistake, I might have just misread the numbers, it's uh the the print on screen is not uh most ideal sometimes, but uh I appreciate that a big, uh Councilor Patterson, go ahead.
Yes, I'm I'm looking at it, it looks to me like the the maximum height is four point two meters, fourteen feet, that seems to be pretty correct, Robert, may I ask that?
Yes, that was the the recommended height.
Okay, so that we're we're down to fourteen feet, um one of the concerns I have is um. Trying to work together with our Main Street Committee, do we have a a mechanism on how we can work this together, do we do we ask? Uh the Main Street Committee for any more recommendations or their recommendation is no final, council can't make a uh a a compromise? Uh I just wondered how we can work together with Main Street Committee on this, on this design, I understand that it, you know, we're we're looking at it as a possible urgent care. Medical center for the municipality of Kingsville and and I'm trying to wrap my head around. Of everybody trying to win, I understand that the amount of hours that Main Street Committee put into it was a lot of very dedicated. Uh residents putting their time together and I understand the business end of it, they want to have uh recognition as to who's in this building. So I don't know how we can work with Main Street Committee going forward on this project, uh could you possibly give me some direction, Mr. Mayor?
Well, certainly, the committee provided the recommendations to council and to administration to follow, council accepted those recommendations. Uh to be incorporated to administrations in future decisions and presentations. Um our 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 director of uh major planning services is identifying that they're trying to take those into consideration. Um I think as noted by our our deputy mayor, not actually having an image of, you know, where these new setbacks or suggested recommended setbacks, heights and uh side and front yards. Because we can't actually see them located on a present app before us today in public, uh we see where the original application was that, um you know, Mr. Brown did circle for us. Uh but yeah, confidently, I can't say exactly where that may be based on the new setback, so. It it may be worthwhile to to defer until we can get that presented to council and the public, so we can see where it is. And also associated to the comments of that Main Street Committee that identified, you know, what ideal signs would look like. They didn't say no signs, but they did say to make sure we have sensitivity to the development in the area around them, so obviously. We've got it to administration to help identify and have that brought to to council again in the future, uh Mr. Brown, if that's, is this a? That assists or not?
You know, it 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 does, I I guess the sign's not being proposed, it's being proposed twenty feet instead of ten feet, so you double the setback from where where it was shown. And you take six feet off off the top, I I don't think the design changes, just the height, height changes, those are your two main changes, I can appreciate council wanting to see it, public wanting to see it. Um I guess you're not gonna really appreciate it until it's built, if, sorry, if it's built, um. I guess I'm a little puzzled by the recommendations, like the recommendations of the Main Street Committee were presented to staff to assess and provide a report back to. The council, they're not actively in use yet, they have to be incorporated into uh. Different documents with it zoning, whether it's official plan, uh council has to, you know, adopt uh the recommendations from. Um from staff once has been prepared, that has knocked back to to council again, but uh again, as you mentioned, I'm. You know, we are certainly trying to be sensitive to keeping those in mind as we move forward, but um there there's no. They're not officially uh ensconced in any type of policy yet.
Sorry, have Councilor Nuthell for a first time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um I think uh this was Mr. Brown's attempt to uh provide a an adaptation. With the uh Main Street developments uh components into it and uh even though they are not um, you know, let's say officially adopted by council. I think he can work that in, but clearly fourteen feet is still too high and I think we want to see exactly what it's gonna look like and where exactly it is. Um I would support um uh deferring this until we can actually see a a rendering, um I'll move that to firm it.
Okay, thank you, got a motion to defer for that additional information, is there a second for that, Councilor Patterson? Okay, thank you, on the deferral, um other than uh as to time, I guess we'll we'll leave that to. Uh administration and the applicant to to create something be brought back to the to council in the future, should this deferral uh be approved? So on the deferral motion, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, motions carried, so I'll come back at a at a future meeting, thank you.